Good evening and welcome to Millbrae City Council Regular Meeting. We are commencing at 7:04. City Clerk, if you could please do roll call.
Councilman Pappen is excused. Councilman Cahillan here. Councilmember Fong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman is requested to join us by remote under the 82449. And he is here virtually. And Mayor Snyder?
Go ahead.
All members of the council are here.
Thank you, City Clerk. Vice Mayor Goodman, there are a few legal requirements to participate remotely for just cause. We have prepared three questions to address those requirements that we may ask that you answer. City Clerk?
Vice Mayor, if you could generally describe the circumstance relating to the need to participate remotely, please?
Yes, I'm attending city business at the National League of Cities in the city of Atlanta, Georgia.
Okay, and also please confirm that you have audio and video throughout the meeting?
Yes, I do.
And lastly, please disclose if there's any visual over the age of 18 present in the room, and if so, their general nature of their relationship with you?
There are none.
Thank you. So there are four members of the city council present, and three of which are within, physically in the meeting location. Vice Mayor is participating remotely, has not exceeded the annual limits, and the city is providing a two-way audiovisual platform allowing public access.
Thank you, City Clerk. With that, if everyone who can rise, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Coming up first, and if we could get that proclamation up, because I don't have my computer on, is ceremonial and presentations. And first up is proclamation proclaiming the month of November as Family Court Awareness Month. And I believe virtually, do we have Family Court Awareness Month Committee member Joan Collins with us? We do. Great. Welcome, Ms. Collins. Whereas, the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, known as FCAMC, is to increase awareness of the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. And whereas, the mission at the FCAMC is fueled by the desire to create awareness and change in the family court system for a conservatively estimated 58,000 children a year ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents while honoring the hundreds of children who have been reported as murdered during visitation with a dangerous parent. And whereas, the mission of the FCAMC is to increase awareness on the importance of empirically-based education and training on domestic violence and child abuse, including emotional, psychological, physical, and sexual abuse, as well as childhood trauma, coercive control, and post-separation abuse for judges and all the professionals working on cases within the family court system. And whereas, the mission of the FCAMC is to increase awareness on the importance of using scientifically valid, evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety, effectiveness, and therapeutic value. And whereas, the mission of the FCAMC is to educate judges and other family court professionals on evidence-based, peer-reviewed research. Such research is a critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as Family Court Awareness Month. And Ms. Collins, please join us and feel free to comment.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate this very much. And on behalf of all family court survivors, we want to extend our gratitude. As I ended up in San Mateo County Family Court after my then-husband was arrested for domestic violence, I would not have been able to believe that my children were going to be put at risk. And I'm one of thousands. I am not an anomaly in this, as the stats have told us. So we are trying to bring awareness to the child safety issues relating to this, and we do appreciate the city of Millbrae's support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments? I have a couple, then. I was watching the news over the weekend, and in San Francisco, they have a special program to try to keep children within family units, not the abusive parent, but to another one. Do we have that kind of program here in San Mateo County?
We do not, ma'am.
So that is something we should be working on?
That is something we're working on. We have, sadly, in San Mateo County, we've recently had to put together a domestic violence task force, as many of you may know, because other than the Half Moon Bay mass shooting, the only homicides in our county have been that of domestic violence perpetrators killing the, unfortunately, all the time, it's been mothers of their children. And so it's a pretty dire situation we're in. Those of us who have survived it are just grateful our children are alive at this point. So there is a lot of work we need to do educating and raising awareness about these issues.
So again, thank you, and thank you for sharing your story. So to the city, we're just revamping our website. I hope that we can get information on here. And as the new Social Equity Commission goes on, I think that this is a good project for the Social Equity Commission. This project that they listed up in San Francisco, I can't quote the number of people that end up homeless, but a large percentage of them were foster children. So the more we can keep family, children with other family members out of that environment, but with family, the better everybody is on that. So I hope that we put that on the Social Equity Commission project. And reach back to us, Ms. Collins, on that. As we form it, we're almost there. A few more months and we'll be...
That would be wonderful. Any progress we get is good progress. Thank you very much.
Excellent. We will get you the proclamation on that, and thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much.
And bringing this to everyone's attention. Thank you. Okay. Next up is the Millbrae Library Annual Report Presentation, and we have the Millbrae Library Interim Branch Manager Carmen Latona-Adams. Please join us, Ms. Adams. And these mics sometimes can be a little tricky. They work really well when you're right up close.
Like this? Okay.
Perfect.
Good evening, Mayor Snyder and members of city council. My name is Carmen Latona-Adams, and I'm the current branch manager for the North Oaks Woodside in Portola Valley. But these vast six months, I've served as the interim manager for Millbrae Library. Jess Ko Shilam is the new permanent branch manager, but is not feeling well tonight, so she sends her regrets, and she will meet you all very, very soon. So in her place, I'm pleased to present the library annual report for fiscal year 2022, 2023. There we go. Thank you. Each of our 13 libraries is unique, but also part of a larger family offering transformative experiences in a single mission to strengthen our community by creating an inclusive sense of place and environment for learning. First established as a county-free library in 1912, the Library Joint Powers Authority was formed in 1999. Covering 351 square miles, our service area is comprised of 11 member cities and the unincorporated areas of the county. San Mateo County Library is uniquely positioned to serve the broader county service area while at the same time understanding each community that we serve. The unique diversity and complexity of those we serve inspire and drive our services. Our staff's diversity mirrors the communities we serve, helping us incorporate the wisdom of varied lived experiences to better offer inclusive resources, meaningful services, and engaging events. Our goal is to reflect our communities by providing valuable time, space, and tools that they need to feel represented and ready to explore. San Mateo County Library provides unmatched services to our community, and we are constantly ranked as one of the best libraries of the nation. Feedback from the community influences our work and strengthens our resolve to provide enlightening, exciting, and essential services. San Mateo County Library continues to be a high-performing organization. Some standout statistics include our 1.5 million library visits, which is a 56% increase over last year; 2.3 million items circulated, which is 6% more items checked out; and our over 245,000 program and event attendees, which is 126% increase over last year. More people are participating in our programs, visiting our locations, and checking out our eclectic collection of materials. Here are a few highlights. This year, we saw an impressive 4.3 million Wi-Fi sessions, served over 40,000 nourishing meals, and checked out laptops over 28,000 times. The following charts summarize totals for Millbrae Library through year-end for key library services. While program attendance at San Mateo County Libraries as a whole this year is on par with totals from fiscal year 2019 and 2020, program attendance at Millbrae Library has surpassed levels recorded that year, falling just 7% shy of totals from fiscal year 2018 and 2019, which is the year prior to the pandemic closures. Our incredible community continues to re-energize us, taking our innovation to new heights. This year, we introduced new programs and initiatives that many in our county met with gratitude and celebration. I'm excited to share a few of our significant achievements featured in this report. This March, we celebrated the first anniversary of our expanded seven-day-a-week service for a total of over 36,000 service hours. Expanded evening and weekend hours also provide more in-person opportunities for discovery and support through access to the latest technologies, programming, and school and job resources that meet many interests. Additional hours are critical in expanding equitable access to people who work multiple jobs and have non-traditional schedules or attend school. Our brand-new Maker Mobile hit the road this summer, taking maker activities and tech to new horizons. The Maker Mobile is a zero-emission, custom-built vehicle that delivers high-impact maker programs beyond our libraries. Having this vehicle means we can take state-of-the-art tech to more people in more places. Residents who may have never experienced technology like 3D printing and laser cutting can now do so thanks to this initiative. And I'm proud to say that the Maker Mobile made its first-ever full-scale community festival debut during the summer's Millbrae Art and Wine. And as you can see, we hit over 1,000 program attendees. The little clicker. We were really happy. Power Up Afternoons offers K-12 students opportunities to connect and grow with after-school experiences. These discovery-and-learning-filled afternoons have strengthened our connections with local students and families. Power Up Afternoons has reached thousands of kids. Participants enjoyed 2,242 hours of programming in which creativity and learning were encouraged. 97% have said that they enjoyed their experience at the library. Big Lift Inspiring Summers Program, created to prevent the loss of learning that can happen over summer break, continues to impact the lives of young residents and their families. Through the generous support of county Measure K funds, the program served 960 students this year and has shown strong, positive academic gains in both literacy and math across participating school districts. This past week, we were excited to welcome DJ Yuka Yu for a Power Up Afternoon session here at the library. That is the top picture. And the bottom picture is Kiddo's Choo-Choo Train. This past summer, we were the proud recipients of the California State Library's Lunch at the Libraries grant, which I helped to implement. And because Lumina Park is a community meal site during the summer, we were able to bring more programming to that school in particular. So that is the last day of summer school for the kids at Lumina Park. Language is power, and being able to read in your preferred language is invaluable. Through the addition of 29,000 world language items, our communities now have more opportunities to experience linguistic diversity than ever before. Chinese, Hindi, Japanese, Korean, Russian, Tagala, and Spanish voices are now more represented in our collections. It's part of our commitment to provide equitable access to materials for all, ensuring community members feel seen and supported. Supplies like pads and tampons are as necessary as toilet paper and soap, yet they are not readily available, accessible, or affordable. We believe that physical need shouldn't keep anyone from using our library, so we decided to take action. By offering free menstrual products in all our libraries, anyone in need can get these necessary resources and continue using our services. This year, we launched Mental Health First Aid Training to continue supporting our communities. Mental Health First Aid is an initiative making training available to empower community members to respond and provide initial help and support to someone experiencing a mental health crisis. The training has given our public service staff additional expertise to help someone in need. In collaboration with several partner agencies, we are now providing direct service to patrons inside our libraries. They're better connecting residents to unemployment access assistance, low-income housing eligibility, food assistance, and other safety net services. We joyfully welcome the return of in-person volunteers this year as well. Enthusiastic volunteers, friends of the library, and foundation members have generously devoted thousands of hours of their time. Their hours of service are essential to advancing important equity goals, whether signing up to tutor an adult literacy learner or contributing language skills and supporting staff with bilingual storytime. Our library champions are our most important organizational asset. This year, we increased library positions and celebrated the return of local teen interns to our libraries for the first time since 2019. I'd like to close my presentation with a short, heartwarming video that highlights our library champions and the incredible services they provide. There's supposed to be audio, though. I can close with my last statement while that's figured.
Why don't we take some questions if there are questions or comments? The vice mayor is with us remotely, and he is our representative on the Joint Powers Authority. Vice Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to add or questions, not to put you on the spot?
No questions. Just thank you for your service. And we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Great. And now I believe we've got audio. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
San Mateo County Libraries is located in the Bay Area. We have 13 branches and cover 351 square miles. We do everything from offering storytimes to young children. We engage with teens with a lot of programming, such as craft programs or college career and career courses.
We offer so many resources, more than just books. We offer free meals to families. We offer tech tutor help. We also offer resource guidance for families who are having difficulty navigating how to get free food.
We have 3D printers. We have laser cutters. We have podcasting equipment. And we have VR systems. And we also have a memory lab where our patrons can save memories. Patrons are learning new skills. They're learning with each other. And at the same time, they're creating a caring and inclusive community.
We try really hard to make sure that we see needs that are in the community and then try to meet those needs, whether that is just helping somebody learn how to access their email or set up an email, to helping them find that perfect book for their kid who is not so stoked about reading. Everyone has a talent here.
We have a wide range of physical and digital materials. We have what we call our library of things, and that includes things like bikes and sewing machines, hotspots, laptops, Chromebooks. We have energy kits. We even loan ukuleles for you to play.
Our libraries are the center of our communities, right? They're a place where people come to do research, to study, to read books to their kids. And San Mateo County Libraries does an excellent job in figuring out how we can impact all of our communities within San Mateo County and how we can best utilize the resources that we have to support them, and all at no cost. It's a great feeling.
I'll just do my last slide, which is just that I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to showcase some of our incredible accomplishments and your ongoing support of the Millbrae Library. In addition, I would like to recognize and thank the library staff for their tremendous work and creativity, Millbrae Friends of the Library for their dedication and advocacy, the city staff and council for your ongoing support, in particular, Vice Mayor Goodman and Recreation Director Hannah Moran for their work on the Library JPA and Operations Committee. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you so much. Counsel?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you. I mean, I'm just so proud of the library system we have in our county, the incredible breadth of services, and honoring the diversity and rising voices, and all that we have to offer, you know, from the sewing machines to bikes. I think we have passes to like curiosity and things like that. There's so much our libraries offer, and I don't know if everybody knows. So I just encourage folks in Millbrae and across the county to really engage with our library system and all it has to offer. And every time I engage with our Millbrae Library here, all the staff and everyone is so wonderful. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman?
I just want to thank you for being here and dedication to the library system. Sometimes we need to be reminded that the library is created for many good reasons, and one of those is equity. Not every kid, not every youth grew up in a family situation where they can study at home and have that opportunity to be quiet in a safe place. I mean, we just declared a proclamation, Family Court Awareness Month, and we discussed some of the challenging issues that some of the families are facing. Because not every kid grew up in a family situation where there's an environment at which they can succeed. And the library provided that opportunity to many children who needed it the most. To me, it's close to me, because I remember growing up as a child, living in public housing, where a family of seven in a 200-square-foot apartment, the only place where I can actually study was the library. And that's the place where all my projects get done and collaborate with my classmates. That's where a lot of kids succeeded, had it not been the library system. And so it's such an important place within our community and provided that opportunity, equitable opportunities for those who need to, who want to succeed and may not have the obvious abundance. So thank you so much.
It's our pleasure.
I just would say thank you, too. My mom is a former librarian, North Hollywood Library, and she's there for book club every Monday at 96 years of age. But the librarians, when I go and pick up books, and she reads probably five, six books a week, she puts them on call. The library has them already for us. We would not be the same family without the library. So very grateful for everything. I know we've got another Leo. We've got several Leo advisors. We meet in the library. It is truly the heart and hub of the city. I do have one comment, though.
Yes.
We've had quite a bit of turnover in our librarians, and we lost Darren. And I heard that Darren got a promotion, and I'd love to send him a congratulations card. So if you could figure, help me figure out how to find him. I think he's up at Glenn.
I know where he is. I will...
Okay, if you could help. And Kaj, too. Kaj, before COVID, would do all of the activities, and he was amazing. And he's also promoted and moved on, so very happy for them. But we'd love to say thank you for all their years, and they were both very special to Millbrae, as are all our librarians.
I will pass that along.
Excellent. Thank you. With that, City Manager?
From the City Manager point of view, our relationship with the staff and the library is fantastic. The library, when we have festivals and events and we need equipment or resources or participation, they're always there for us. And so I just really enjoy the great relationship. And as you mentioned, Hannah Moran, our Recreation Director, is our liaison. And it's a healthy relationship. We have the makers' space that's under construction currently. And I also would just like to thank you for the great partnership and the great job that you all do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, that reminds me of the last thing. Actually, that reminds me of the last thing. That little train, when I saw that, I go, I want to see it. It was great to hear that that was at Lamita Park. We're going to be bringing back an annual bike rodeo. Can we make sure that our dates cooperate and work? How would we do that?
Who would, I mean, I could just send you guys an email.
Hannah, Hannah would probably be our Recreation Director. Would be the, sorry Hannah, one more thing on your to-do list, but.
I will email her.
It's really cute.
Yeah, we would, any reason to get out in the community, we will gladly take it.
Excellent, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Agenda Item Number Two. This is Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing. Sorry, I've got allergies and my throat keeps drying out today. City Manager Tom Williams, will you please provide the update and report out on the November 14, 2023 closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council. Tom Williams, City Manager. There is no reportable action from the November 14 closed session meeting. And as you all know, I waived the reading of the agenda items. And so moving into my update. We had a terrific Veterans Day ceremony, so I'd like to thank everyone as we hosted our annual Veterans Day salute and flag raising ceremony. That was in partnership with One Vet, One Voice for the second year in a row and the Millbrae Lions Club. We had a special guest from the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office Honor Guard, and we'd like to thank them, as well as the Sheriff's Activity League and the United States Army Recruiting Unit from this area that joined us in the celebration. So the event's an opportunity each year for our community to connect with local veterans and hear their experiences. And it's just really turned out to be a nice event for us. Also, if you look at the forecast starting tomorrow, we're going to have a little bit of rain Wednesday through Friday. So our sandbag filling station has been refilled with sandbags and sand. This is located on Millbrae Avenue between Palm and Hazel Avenues. This is on the south side of Millbrae Avenue along the Spur Trail. So if anyone needs sandbags in preparation for this rainy weather, we will keep the sandbag filling station open and refilled as needed. Also, Central County Fire Department is hosting their annual toy drive to help ensure that all children in San Mateo County have a gift to open this Christmas. So they've set up collection barrels at all Central County Fire Department stations, including both the Millbrae Fire Stations. We will also have a barrel here in the lobby of City Hall. So the public can drop off new and unwrapped toys at either the Fire Station 37, which is located at 511 Magnolia Avenue, or Fire Station 38, which is up at 785 Crestview Drive up on the hill. And as I mentioned, there'll also be a collection barrel here in the City Hall Library and the Recreation Center. So those four locations. So anything would be appreciated. And just, we thank everyone for their kindness that will donate. Also coming up, a couple of key dates. November 20 is the State of the City from Mayor Snyder. That will be at 5:30 PM at the David J. Chakuti Room. Saturday, December 2, we're hosting Pictures with Santa at the gazebo out here off of Library Lane from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. And then the City and Millbrae Chamber of Commerce Holiday Tree Lighting will be out in front of City Hall at 5:00 PM. So that's Saturday, December 2. Friday, December 8, Millbrae Goes to the Movies featuring The Grinch will be played. 6:30 PM, Friday, December 8, at our Recreation Center. Saturday, December 9, is the Millbrae Education Foundation Holiday Potique. This is, I think, the second year that we're hosting in association with the MEF. So that runs from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the Great Hall at the Recreation Center. So with that, Mayor, that is a quick update. We have a lot of things going on, but I don't want to be here till 1:00 AM. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And to the public, this is the first time we've brought the State of the City back in person since 2019. So we do have snacks, simple snacks, but come and join us. And I think it's a night to take stock in everything that we've accomplished this year, we collectively, the community, staff, and council. And I think you're going to be amazed at just how much, with everything else happening around us, got done this year. So please join us a week from, well, a week from yesterday at the Chakuti Room. With that, a couple of changes to the agenda tonight.
Sorry, quick question. Will the State of the City be hybrid or is it in person only?
So it's in person, but it will be recorded and I think livestreamed by MCTV.
Thank you.
It's been a long time to get back into that habit in a post-COVID world on that. In terms of City Council, any changes? I have four changes tonight. There's a request from the mayor to move Agenda Items 12 and 13 to Consent Calendar. That is the approval of Mr. Mohammed to the Vector Control Board and to a number of people on Economic Vitality, Community Enhancement, and the Youth Advisory Commissions. I didn't want them to wait till the end of the council so we can do it upfront and let everybody get back to their lives on that. And then there was a request to move both Item 5 and 6 from Consent. So with those changes, Consent Calendar is going to look a little bit different. Vice Mayor? I'm, sorry, Councilman?
Move Consent Calendar 7, 8, and 12 and 13.
5 and 7, oh, we're not there yet.
Oh, I thought.
No, no, we're there, but we do the agenda changing up here so that we can get primed up. We're all good. All right, with that, if there are no other changes to the agenda, moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of Minutes. We have four sets of minutes tonight. Special Meeting Minutes of July 19, 2023, Action. Regular Meeting Minutes of July 25, 2023, Action. Special Meeting Minutes of August 16, 2023, Action. And Special Meeting Minutes of August 29, 2023, Action. Council comments?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? City Clerk, could you call the vote?
Councilwoman Caitlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The four sets of minutes are approved by four to zero.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Four, All Report from City Committee or Commission Chairs. We have no reports tonight. Moving on to Public Communication. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda but must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned. And if they continue to disregard city rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. We will be calling in-person speakers first and virtual speakers after. And first up, I have Amy Kelly Lauer.
Good evening, Council and city staff. My name is Amy Kelly Lauer, and I'm a resident here in Millbrae, and I do live on Kelly Lane. We can talk about why we have all those Kelly names coming together. But today is November 14. And this year, unlike most years, I've heard many people say, I can't believe it's November already. And I'm seeing nods. So yes, November 14, I took a step back because today is also known as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. And it is, there's a resolution in the state of California that was passed in 2021 because of our neighbors and a group of fifth graders in South San Francisco in elementary school who are supported by the County Office of Education to make it so. So I'm here today to ask that we put on our calendars for Millbrae that a year from now, we will proclaim November 14 as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. And this is an opportunity for a lot of education awareness for our children. So going back 63 years, a brave six-year-old girl integrated her school in Louisiana. Brown versus Board of Ed was passed the year of her birth, which is remarkable. I'm 60 years old, so this was practically in my lifetime. For many of you who are young, it was in your parents' lifetime. And younger than that, it's in your grandparents' lifetime. And this is the power of a six-year-old, and in our own county, the power of fifth graders coming together. And I love the idea of a six-year-old girl rising in her power and changing history and using this as a way to educate our youth. So that's all I have to say. I'm willing to take this up with our Board of Ed and contact the PTOs if the council is willing to proclaim that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly Lauer. Michael Kelly?
Good evening, City Council. Michael Kelly, I've lived in Millbrae for many weeks now. One of the proudest things I have done in Millbrae is being one of the co-founders of the Anti-Racist Coalition. And I'm here tonight to talk about the Social Equity Commission in my role with ARC. It's the one thing I'm proudest of accomplishing is getting the formation of the Social Equity Committee to form the commission. And it was a very hard process to go through, but again, I'm really proud of it. Tonight, I'm here with an ask. Unfortunately, Councilwoman Papin isn't here, but I'd like our City Council to consider if she, I understand that this month, there's over 70 applicants that want to be on the committee. There's going to be a vote of who forms, who's going to be on that committee to form the commission. And I would like to request that Councilwoman Papin recuse herself from that vote. And if she won't, then the council consider that. Because of the comments she made on the record in this very room, she said, for example, that nobody from ARC should be able to sit on that committee or on that commission. And she wrote into the staff report that the history Millbrae has with redlining and, you know, preventing people of color from owning homes here was just so much a culture war. And in my opinion, she's disqualified herself from the voting. You know, with ARC, we've got hundreds of members in Millbrae. We've got thousands of followers. ARC stands for Anti-Racist Coalition. And the point being is there's even eight steering committee members that help kind of set the goals and the plans that we've got. And for Councilwoman Papin to just say everyone from ARC should be prohibited or excluded from serving on social equity is just so egregious. It's so abhorrent. We've got steering committee members that are on the school board of Millbrae. We've got steering committee that were voted Volunteer of the Year this year. We've got steering committee members of ARC that are the chair of the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. Millbrae Steering Committee, ARC members that are the chair of Parks and Rec. And for Councilwoman Papin to just say everyone from ARC, and it's on the record, it was set in this room, it was recorded, it was written into the staff report. It's incredibly troubling that that's the position our councilwoman would take. I'm really disappointed she's not here to hear me say this in person, but it's incredibly important that this be an untainted vote for who serves on the committee that's going to select the commission. And as I understand it, the commission, excuse me, the council members are the ones that are going to vote for who does that serving. So that is my ask. I know we're winding down on time, but if she won't recuse herself, please have her be removed from the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I have no other paper copies. Last call for anyone here in the room if you have a comment for items not on the agenda. I believe we have one on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one speaker joining us on Zoom. Her name is Nancy. And Nancy, if you could accept the unmute and also state your name for the record, please, your full name. Nancy, please accept the unmute. We do have another hands raised, so we could come back to, okay. Next speaker is Justin Lu. If you could go ahead and accept unmute.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm in the Bayside Manor neighborhood, and the Orange Spin e-bikes have become a major nuisance. Ever since Spurring Game in Millbrae offers free rides on the October 23 through the 27, there's always someone who parks the bike at the stop sign pole at the intersection of Hill Crescent and Aviator. If not parked there, they just dump it on the sidewalk on the same intersection. This creates a nuisance. It blocks traffic, foot traffic. And I've called Spin customer support eight times. They responded by sending someone over to move the bikes to a proper parking spot. And they claim that they installed a geo-fence to prevent riders from stopping there. While they do eventually move the bike away, another bike pops up the same location about a week later. So the geo-fencing, whatever Spin did, doesn't work. I asked the city to please work with Spin to better educate the riders about parking adequate and take more punitive measures for repeat offenders. And if that's not possible, maybe the city should reconsider having these bikes. I wish I had more information on who these offenders are, but if I had to take a guess, it's the transient from the BART station. Yeah, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Louis. And City Manager, I don't see staff here. As a liaison to the Millbrae Bike Pedestrian Committee, I'll make sure we get that on the agenda.
I mean, I'll just note that we'll be in contact with Spin, and we have, and we'll follow up on this.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to call on Nancy one more time. Nancy, please accept the mute and state your full name for the record. Okay, so Nancy, if you plan to, this is your last opportunity to speak. If you could please accept the mute, please.
Great. Okay, we've tried. We will be back in two weeks on that. Moving on to our closing public communication, moving on to Consent Calendar. And just to save the confusion, let me read the ones that we're going to be actually voting on under consent. And then I can get a second, a motion in a second. It would be Agenda Item Number Seven, Waive the Second Reading and Adopt an Ordinance Amendments to Title VIII, Public Works, Chapter 8.65 of the Millbrae Municipal Code, prohibiting the installation of synthetic grass and artificial turf landscaping. Action item. Agenda Item Number Eight, Resolution Approving a Contract Change Order to the Millbrae Recreation Center project with Block Construction Company in the amount of $139,029 for the Lincoln Circle infrastructure and pavement improvement and amending the fiscal year 2023/2024 capital improvement program. An action item. And then moving what would have been under New Business is Agenda Item Number 12. Consider the appointment to the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees. Action, and I do know that we have our representative here in the audience with us. And Agenda Item Number 13, Consider the Appointments to Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, and the Youth Advisory Committee. And that is also an action item.
So move on Items 7, 8, 12, and 13.
Thank you, Councilman.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman. City Clerk, could you roll call the vote, please?
Councilmember Caitlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Consent Items 7, 8, 12, and 13 passed by a vote of four to zero.
And I want to give my thank you to Dr. Mohammed Balum, who has been our representative with the Vector Control since 2015. Congratulations. And thank you to the council subcommittee, which is the Vice Mayor, Goodman, and Councilman Fung, who have interviewed the following. And I'm just so excited, and just so the public sees this. Several people applied for Park and Rec. We didn't have enough seats. But Mark Chen and David Tavakoli, who did such a great job at the Park and Rec interview, are now our new members to the Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, along with, and this is really exciting, our very first under-18-year-old representative to the committee that actually works on climate change. And that is Ms. Aluki Ancor Pricklin? I'm sorry if I mispronounce. She's an extra neighbor of a friend of mine. I couldn't be happier to have this young woman. We changed the rules so that you do not have to have, you do not have to be a registered voter. So young people ages 14 and up can serve on all the committees except the mandated commissions on that. And then I'd also love to welcome Sun Ho Ah Young, Sunny, that we know, to Economic Vitality, and Zainab Masri as the alternate to the Youth Advisory Committee. So welcome all of you, yet. So welcome all of you, yet to the city clerk and yet sworn in. So happy to have you on board. Moving back to what would have been on consent calendar, this is Agenda Item Number Five. Agenda Item Five is Resolution Authorizing the City Manager or Designee to Execute an Agreement with the County of San Mateo to Provide Office of Emergency Services District Coordinator Services in an Amount Not to Exceed $59,700 for the Period of July 1st, 2023, and June 30th, 2022 through June 30th, 2024. And this is an action, and I actually asked for this to be called. Staff, unless you want to present, I'll just go into my couple of my comments.
That's fine.
On that. And I pulled this off consent calendar so the public could hear this. Let me get to my notes. I'm the representative to the Emergency Services Council, and that council meets about three times a year. The Board of Supervisors canceled our fall meeting, and I'm bringing this up now because we have come through several years of numerous disasters, and we haven't really debriefed them. So I'm fully in support of the contract amount and the representative that we have here, but we haven't done a disaster prep workshop since November 2019. COVID has gotten in the way. So I hope within the next calendar and/or fiscal year, we can do a training and alert all of the people of Millbrae that we're now under something called Zone Haven. And if we have to do an evacuation, that there is a process to do that. And I feel very strongly that we need that training aspect. The other cities within CCFD, Central County Fire, have had those kinds of drills, and we have not had that. And it'll sound really counterintuitive, given that our whole west side is a wildland urban interface, everything along 280. But the two neighbor, the two times we've almost had to create evacuation orders have been for Bayside Manor due from fires starting from Caltrain. So where a disaster happens may not be where we think it may happen. So I just brought this up because we never get a chance as a council to hear each other on that one. We run out of time, and I do think it's time that we do some work on disaster management in the next year. Thank you. With that, if I could have a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you, Councilman.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman. City, I'm sorry, I didn't call for comments. Any comments?
There are no comments online, Mayor.
Okay, and I have no public speaker cards for this. City Clerk, could you call the vote?
Councilmember Cahillan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Consent Item Number Five passed by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. And for anybody, the new CERT class is coming up in January. We discovered during the COVID disaster, most of our CERT members are older, and they needed to be isolated. So we need a broad range of ages, including young people, for the CERT training. It starts in January. It's really fabulous. Both Councilwoman Pappan and I are CERT trained. I encourage people to sign up for that CERT class. It's going to be here in Millbrae with our own Millbrae trainers. Please, I want to see you at that first meeting in January. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, I'm not sure who asked for this to be pulled, but this is Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with Lisa Weiss Consulting, LWC, for the Preparation of Objective Residential Design Standards, Related Zoning Code Amendments, and California Environmental Quality SEQA Clearance in an Amount Not to Exceed $500,000. And City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have our planning team. I'd like to introduce Angelica Gonzalez, who will be providing the staff presentation. We also have representatives from LWC to answer any questions that you may have this evening. So we have a short presentation for you.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Schneider, members of City Council. For the record, my name is Angelica Gonzalez, Senior Planner with the City of Millbrae's Planning Division. Joining me today is Andrew Mokinson, who is our Community Development Director, and Roscoe Mata, who's also our Planning Manager. Joining me is also Monica Sidlick with Lisa Weiss Consulting. The item before you is Item Six for Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with Lisa Weiss Consulting for the Preparation of the Objective Residential Design Standards, Related Zoning Code Amendments, and the SEQA Clearance in an Amount Not to Exceed $500,000. I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Monica Sidlick for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Angelica. City Councilmembers, good evening. We're glad to be here. My name is, a little bit closer, how does that sound? Okay. Good evening, we're glad to be here. My name is Monica Sidlick. I'm a Senior Associate with Lisa Weiss Consulting. We're a planning, land use, economics consulting firm, and we have offices in San Luis Obispo, and San Francisco, and Los Angeles. I'm based out of the San Francisco office right downtown. I'm joined by Henry Pontorelli here, in person. And joining us virtually is Lisa Weiss. And Henry and Lisa are the owners of the firm. And we're really glad to talk about the residential design standards for the City of Millbrae. So I will ask Lisa to advance the slide. Is that right? Okay. Great. So our proposal for the City of Millbrae is really about implementing a number of general plan policies and a council strategic initiative listed here. So the relevant general plan policies call for clear and predictable standards that facilitate efficient development, an efficient development review process, and promote cost-effective residential development, and decrease city staff review time for residential projects, and ensure that new development meets the expectations of the city and the community. And shown here, Policy 3.2, which calls for consistency with state law. So that is really sort of one of the main occasions for this project here. So when we say state law, we're referring to the sort of flood of recent state legislation related to housing. In fact, there's new housing-related legislation signed into law a few weeks ago, effective in the new year. There's a whole lot to be consistent with, really. When we read that general plan policy, to be consistent with state law, that's a big undertaking. So here are just a few that are especially relevant to our project listed here on the slide. So I'd like to say just a word about one of these in the middle here, SB 330. So that prohibits the city, all cities in California, from denying any residential projects based on subjective standards, which means ultimately that the review for any housing development is ministerial. So we need objective standards to essentially anticipate what would have come out of a discretionary design review or a planning commission review. And next slide, please. So this is what we do at LWC. We've prepared objective design standards for the communities shown here since SB 330 became effective in 2020. And then for much longer than that, we've been working on zoning codes, from targeted code updates to comprehensive rewrites to everything in between. And for the ODS, the objective design standards, these have really been across the board, from projects where we're developing standards for only a few, for example, maybe just a few housing element sites, to standards for one zone or two zones, to standards for development citywide. And of course, the set of issues that we address in the objective design standards really varies for each city. So the standards are really customized for each community. But regardless, in all cases, it's really important that the standards acknowledge existing patterns of development, existing character of the community, reflect the community's desires and priorities, anticipates density bonus projects, and is consistent with existing regulations, and ultimately leads to better outcomes and predictable outcomes that we know the community will support. That we know the community will support because we've checked in with the community and done some outreach. So here is how, next slide, please, how we have proposed to go about drafting these standards for the City of Millbrae over the course of about two years. So overall, we've got about, we've got six tasks. So we'll take a closer look at these tasks on the following slides. But first, let's look at the big picture. So Task One is our sort of discovery phase, at the end of which we'll develop an analysis and recommendations memo. Task Two is pretty extensive community engagement. This is an engagement-heavy scope of work. So it includes engagement with the whole community, both online and in person, and check-ins with the advisory committee and the planning commission, and with you all in the year 2024. Then we'll draft standards in two parts, really. One, for single-family duplex, triplex, and ADUs. And another set for multifamily and residential mixed-use development. And then in Task Four, we'll follow that with the actual zoning amendments themselves. How do we integrate these standards into the Millbrae code and make sure they're implemented properly? We'll prepare required SEQA documentation, and then we'll work through hearings and the adoption and preparation of final documents. So let's take very briefly a closer look into the scope here. So in the next slide, for Task One, our Task One will involve working with the city staff and the community to look really closely at Millbrae neighborhoods. What makes them the unique Millbrae neighborhoods that they are? What are the unique historical features? What is it that has made them evolve the way they have? And what are some issues that the community has been seeing in new development that we want to address? Next slide. Engagement, as I mentioned, is multifaceted. We've got social media, we've got a website, an online survey that'll, it's usually open for four to six weeks or so, two workshops and a series of meetings. And then the standards themselves, next slide. This, of course, really depends on what we find, what we hear from the community, what we hear from you, the best practice that we recommend. And we'll develop these together with the staff and the community. So as I mentioned, we'll do them in two parts. We can, we can address a range of topics, but they're not all necessarily important for Millbrae or for every neighborhood in Millbrae. We'll look at building envelope and building design, privacy, roof form. We can look at materials and colors. We can look at facade design and composition. We can look at site design and circulation and parking design and access. We can, we can, we will look at landscaping standards. We'll look at architectural styles, to name just a few, really. And then we'll wrap, next slide, we'll wrap up with zoning code amendments, looking at the best streamlining opportunities to get housing development through, and all the other amendments that we'll need to make throughout the code to enforce the new standards. We anticipate that a memo of consistency will suffice for SEQA, and we'll proceed through hearings and adoption before the end of 2025. And that's my brief summary of the scope of work that we've proposed, and I will turn this over to the Chair.
You'll be there for questions for us. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for that. Council and City Vice Mayor, I'm looking at you. If you need anything, I'm looking. Council, comments? The Councilman.
Yeah, I'll just say a few words. Thanks, thank you for coming in today to explain. It might seem simple because you have a brief presentation, but a work takes two years, and I think this will completely overhaul our zoning standard. I mean, this really will define what Millbrae looks like two years from now, after this is established and qualified upon. It's an important piece of work that will take away a lot of the confusions and really craft a pathway to success for future permanent applicants who seek development opportunities in our city. And so that's why I want to make sure that we bring this forward so the community is aware that this work is going on, as we look forward to certainly, you know, revamp our downtown, make sure that every piece of puzzle has its highest and best use, bring about more opportunity, more housing opportunity for everyone, make housing more affordable. And this will help make sure that process is as quickly and as successful as it can possibly be. Because housing is an important aspect of our work, and we certainly have a arena goal that we want to meet. And we've done a good job at it in the past, but this will continue to help us really focus on developing the city for the next generation. So thanks for coming in today, and I look forward to seeing the proposal. And certainly, I saw it in your proposal here as well, you know, plenty of community outreach is being baked into the process here, which would be extremely important. So it's, land use is a, you know, it's a sensitive matter. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, I've got a couple of questions. I think you answered one just on that. The objective design guidelines can include roof colors. So I'm the council member that works in the environmental field, and during COVID attended a great number of webinars on climate resiliency, and have been pushing tree planting for the need to keep the neighborhoods cool. And then my peers at UCLA said, yeah, but the fast track is actually a cool roof, and painting with reflect, a very specific reflective white paint. Would that have to go into objective design guidelines for that, so that we're also working on our climate resiliency work? I'm seeing your, if you could say for the-
Maybe can handle that, because, I mean, this will go into the evolution of this, but the objective design guidelines, or not guidelines, it's a standard, it's a mandate. So if we want white roofs, we have to put it in. You must have white roof. If we want discretion and not have to mandate it one way or the other, then we leave it out. Objective design guidelines go to character of the built environment. We have, you know, five, six different neighborhoods that really have unique characteristics. Some are modern, some are, you know, more traditional. And so that's where, you know, kind of by law, if, for example, we want to mandate, you must have, you know, six-inch or seven-inch recessed windows that are wood-framed, that has to go into it. So the discretion is no longer available to the professional planners in the field of city planning in the state of California. So on that question, I would say, no, we would not actually, as an example, include that, because we don't want to mandate you must have a white roof, because what I think's going to happen in the future, quite frankly, is architects are going to come back and say, boy, we wish you had some discretion. And I think that that's where Councilmember Fung, I mean, not to put a word in your mouth, but just reading the tea leaves, has some concern, because discretion in the built environment, it's a double-edged sword, right? It's good and bad. It could get, you know, caught in red tape and delays, but when we mandate things, and that is the law of the land, that's an absolute, you must do that. And that's kind of what the state of California is making us do here. So as this evolves, we're going to have to say, okay, what do we want to mandate? What's important, and what do we not want to mandate?
So, so just-
Does that make sense? So design versus environment.
It does completely. However, I am an environmental professional, and I will say from every iota of me that none of us have done what we need to do for climate change. So white roofs is just one example, green roofs, cool roofs, or things like that. I work in the zero-waste field, and we had an SB 330 project, Anton Apartments, that will be demolishing the El Rancho Hotel at a cost of 1.1 million in TOT. But we couldn't even, under the state mandates, get that developer to put their garbage enclosures inside. So instead, they're going to be right on the street, right across from a preschool. So those children are going to see garbage. Now, I love garbage, but I do not think we should see garbage cans, or bins, or carts, or anything that should be inside. So with these design guidelines, will that kind of help that problem that we experienced with SB 330 and the Anton Apartments? Can that help fix that problem?
We can mandate that. So as we evolve, we can absolutely say, you know, you must have a solid waste enclosure that needs to be hidden from the public view. I mean, we can go to that detail, but we're going to have to mandate it. So it's going, you know, like I said, no longer can we have the discretion, say, on an Anton project or something like that, that says, hey, let's work with the design team and our planners and- team and our planners and our design team to say, maybe you can move this, you know, garbage enclosure, you know, behind the parking garage, for example. That's what's taken away, and it's, this is kind of an evolving thing, and I think it's kind of what you wish for, because discretion, I think, is a critical, important element at the local level. So anyway, this is where we, with the firm and all the outreach and study sessions with planning commission and city council and the community, we'll get all of this. You know, what is important to us? What do we want to make sure that we mandate versus what we can live with, whatever the applicant comes in with?
And because I'm going to be gone in 13 months, I'm termed out in 13 months. So boo hoo when this exciting stuff is happening, I'm going to throw two more in. I've been following what San Carlos has been doing with their objective design guidelines, and then it evolved a little bit into monster houses. I know that can be open to interpretation, so I'm just going to throw out monster houses, which in my field, we worked on 20, 30 years ago in Mountain View and Palo Alto. So we're finally getting to the discussion of monster houses in San Mateo County. The other one that I wonder if in design guidelines, does it also include my dream that all rainwater will stay on the property where it falls, which means bioswales or landscaping to go with the housing that will keep that rain on the ground at our homes, as opposed to ending up in the storm drain? I'm just throwing that out there. And then my last one, one of the frustrations, because I tend to read the EIRs or I serve on the regional committees, like SFO noise, and then I was mayor when high-speed rail came through and said they would eminent domain us, and both of them, both SFO and high-speed rail and any other entity that gets federal funding, which means almost every transportation agency, also has to do NEPA. And within NEPA, National Environmental Protection Act, did I get it right? NEPA? It includes a higher level of care to communities if they're designated historic. I know everybody hates hearing historic San Mateo, the city of is currently fighting it, because it thinks, oh, we're going to say this is the only window you can put in. But if we have historic neighborhoods, that meant that SFO, when they did their most recent moving the runways 450 feet into us, they would have had to have mitigated. But instead, they said, Millbrae's not EJ, environmental justice, Millbrae's not historic, we do not have to do these things. So to me, and I see the timeline, and I'm sure that it's very reasonable, I wish it could be faster, but I hope, will, and our council goals is the designation of neighborhoods, any neighborhood 50 years or older can designate, and it means in these environmental documents that these developers, these big landowners have to do more work. That's my oversimplistic view of it. But when they specifically call out, Millbrae, you are not this and you are not that, therefore we don't have to do anything, we need to fix that. And I'm hopeful that these objective design guidelines and/or with the historical neighborhood designation perhaps can be concurrent. I won't be here in 13 months, so I'll just be sitting out there whining.
I think this is all something that, you know, we're here tonight to discuss the contract, so I think these are all things that we'll discuss as we go forward.
Okay. All right. In that case, I'm happy to vote for the contract, but these are the things that I am curious about. I would throw bike corrals in there too, because everybody's got an opinion on those orange bikes. So with that, I will hush. Vice mayor, any comments? Any comments from the, any comments from the public?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, closing public comment, bringing it back to council, this is an action item.
Move to approval. Second.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Thank you, Vice Mayor Goodman. If there's no further discussion, city clerk, if you could call the vote.
Councilmember Kaylin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Item number six passed by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. We're very excited to have this. I think it was, was it our goal last year? I mean, it would have been a goal anyway, regardless of whether it's state housing things, so go forth, do good work, public, pay attention on this, and good luck. the end of consent calendar, moving to public hearing. The public hearing, we had a public hearing item initially regarding the Millbrae Stationery Specific Plan Amendment to Allow Biosafety Level Two Uses in the TOD Development Zone Transportation.
Mayor, that's not on the agenda.
I've been given my clues on how I'm supposed to present this, so, and it has been removed by the agenda by the request of the developer. Moving on to existing business. Agenda item number nine, this is review and recommend for adoption by the city council and ordinance repealing and replacing section 5.95.70, Regulation of Methods of Selling Tobacco Products in Chapter 5.95, Smoking Control. This is an action item. City manager.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Andy Mogensen for a presentation, our community development director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, we're going to be considering an item related to our tobacco retailer's licensing program. We rely on San Mateo County for this program. Next slide, please. So I want to give you some background about the regulatory framework with tobacco. So just a year ago, California voters approved Proposition 31, and that upheld the state law prohibiting tobacco retailers from selling most flavored tobacco products. That's why you don't see menthols for sale and other things, and I'll touch on that in a moment. And another thing that happened, I think it was kind of a wake-up call for youth access to tobacco, you know, San Mateo County, they operate our program for tobacco retailers, and they, every so often, will test, you know, the retailers out, just like what ABC does for alcohol sales for the youth. And between April 2021 and June 2022, they found 11 of 74 tested tobacco retailers throughout the county were selling through underage youth decoys during their sheriff's office enforcement operations. And that was about a 15% rate. Of those, of the tobacco retailers in Millbrae at the time, two were found to be noncompliant. So it's a little bit of a wake-up call, saying, hey, you know, we really aren't doing enough to restrict youth access to tobacco. And so that sparked some of the, some of the changes at the county level. And state, like I said, state law now prohibits the sale of flavored tobacco products. That includes menthol cigarettes, e-liquids, e-juices, pods, or any other vape device or tobacco product accessory that contains any flavored liquid, regardless of whether they contain nicotine. I'll show you the next slide, and this was a slide from a presentation we gave a year ago. Examples of the products that are now banned, even if it's just droplets that are flavored that you could add to tobacco, things like that, these are all now banned under state law. So obviously, the state has taken a lot of effort to restrict tobacco, flavored tobaccos, and discourage any products that would be appealing to youth, because the idea is that if we can reduce tobacco access to our youth, we can reduce future smokers, and so that's been the goal. So next slide. So with that in mind and that regulatory, those regulatory things that have been going on, Millbrae is one of 14 jurisdictions that utilize San Mateo County for their tobacco retailer licensing and enforcement services. Right now, tobacco regulations and definitions are different among the participating cities because of pre-existing ordinances. Not a lot of cities have caught up to state law banning flavored tobacco, things of that nature. There are some differences between definitions. Some cities have a definition that's a little bit different than another. And the, having all of everybody on the same page is vital to having an effective enforcement program. So that's one of the reasons why we've got this ordinance before you tonight. Restricting youth access to tobacco products and enforcing the voter-upheld ban on these products are crucial to that strategy. And then, as, and participating cities in the county's tobacco retailer enforcement program are required to adopt San Mateo County's ordinance in order to continue using them for this program. It's been a good program, it's been very cost-effective for our city. Next slide. So this past May, you know, the county, based on those changes in state law and the history that had happened, the county did strengthen their enforcement program. They strengthened their tobacco retailer program to further restrict youth access to tobacco products. They updated the code. The county has, County, San Mateo County's Environmental Health Services is committed to increasing the number of required onsite inspections to two per year, so those retailers are going to be tested twice a year. They've increased the fines for selling tobacco to minors from, they've increased it to $500 for a first violation up to $1,000 for any subsequent violation within a 60-month period. They can now, they can now suspend a permit for selling tobacco to minors. In the past, sometimes a retailer would just get a warning letter. One of the things in this ordinance, pharmacies are no longer permitted to sell tobacco products. The good news is, in Millbrae, we don't have any businesses with a pharmacy that sell products, tobacco products anymore. The Walgreens across the street no longer sells tobacco. Safeway doesn't sell tobacco anymore. So those are big changes. So they're not, they would not be affected. We wouldn't, we don't have any pharmacies that would be affected by that provision in the county ordinance. And then the other thing that the county has, new tobacco retailer permits, and this is part of their efforts to prevent youth access. Any new permits, and they won't be issuing any new tobacco retailer permits at any location within 1,000 feet of a youth-populated area. They define that as like a public or private school. Playgrounds, for instance, are within 500 feet of an existing tobacco retailer. So that's, that's one of the rules they've got in their ordinance moving forward. Like I said, we have about roughly 12 businesses in plus or minus in Sanley, or I'm sorry, in Millbrae right now that sell tobacco. As I mentioned, Walgreens and Safeway no longer sell tobacco, so they have no need for a permit in the future. And so it's a very cost-effective program for us. It's entirely paid for by the fees paid for by applicants to the county. The annual permit is $672, a one-time fee for a new applicant is $249. So it's a very, it's a very cost-effective program for us and for our businesses. So with that, we're recommending, next slide, we're recommending to continue, obviously it's been a good program for us, we're recommending to continue the program, and with that, we're recommending the council introduce an ordinance repealing and replacing the section of the code and identifying the county's tobacco ordinance, their update. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Mogensen. I see the vice mayor's hand up, and then I'll come back to council. Vice mayor.
Yeah, can you go back to the analysis slide, please? On, so we have to adopt a ordinance that is equal, or could we go even further than the county, or does it have to match the county word for word?
Joan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have to match the county word for word if we want to take advantage of their resources to enforce the system.
Okay. No, my only concern is just the up to 1,000 versus you will be fined $1,000 for a subsequent violation, and then instead of permits may be suspended, permits will be suspended. So if, in the future, in your communications, if we could talk about how we could be a little bit more tougher on repeat offenders in the future to protect our young people, that would be great.
Perhaps this is something that we could discuss in the future with the county, but up to 1,000, we cannot exceed 1,000 under this scheme. This is a misdemeanor. I mean, this is-
No, I understand that. I didn't say, the more I said, instead of up to, just have it at 1,000 versus, say, five, okay, it's 500, and then the next one is 501.
I see.
Is that up to? And that's all I'm saying.
I got it.
And so hopefully, as we continue with this ordinance and following along with the county and its partnership, that we say, hey, is it possible we could be a little bit more tougher in an effort to protect our young people instead of businesses?
Good point. We could talk to the county. They may, in fact, be pretty tough in their enforcement.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman?
No, just in reviewing this staff report, it was concerning to see how much is still happening, but I appreciate the county's work, being diligent on, you know, kind of testing our retailers and working to make even more stringent consequences so we can curb this even more as we move forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kaylin. Mr. Fung, okay. Questions? Lately, a lot of the public calls me on everything that needs enforcement. So my question to staff is, I support this, I'm grateful to the county, but if they see something happening in any of those 14 locations, is it 11 locations?
Roughly 12 right now.
Okay, 12, 12 in Millbrae. Who do they report?
Yeah.
Who do they complain to? Can we have it on our website?
Oh, yeah.
Can we make it really easy for our public to know? I actually, just so the public knows, I get all the C-click fixes for Millbrae, and a lot of times it says, hey, that's out of our jurisdiction.
I can help. Anytime people can put this into a category in C-click's fix, they can call community development, they can call our code enforcement officer, they can also call our police division, and we can certainly respond to that.
Great.
Absolutely.
Can we get that on our website?
Yes.
This is what you do, this is how you do it. Because my habit is, I like to point everybody to the website, if I can. And then my other question, and I didn't think about it till you said within 500 feet, I think it was 500 feet of where kids are. The farmer's market is not a kid activity, but it has children there, and there is a shop right, like 10 feet away that I think sells cigarettes. I could be wrong, I haven't been in there in a while. What do we do about that? It's only once a week.
Well, that wouldn't be a youth-
That wouldn't be considered a youth activity. Okay.
But Mayor, on that, there is a new youth, it's not a preschool, but a new school and activity center that is on the 200-block Broadway that just opened. So that would be-
And this is going forward, so we wouldn't be able to issue a new permit.
Okay. Yeah, there's also the dance school that's right there.
Right. And so this is for anybody going forward. It wouldn't be, you know, if you're already there, if a business is already established.
So they're grandfathered in, they're protected in.
Yeah.
Okay. Fully in support of this. Thank you, staff. Thank you, county.
Thank you.
Any, opening it up for public comment? I have no paper comments. Do we have anybody online?
You have a person?
We do have one speaker, Trisha Barr. Please accept the mute, please.
Hi, this is Trisha Barr, and I'm the co-chair of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition, and, which is a volunteer position. I'm actually driving to pick up my youth right now at a wrestling practice, and I just wanted to urge you to please adopt the ordinance that's in front of you today and take advantage of the county-city partnership that is available. We've worked hard to get these extra provisions in there for proactive compliance checks, because before it was based on a complaint-based system, which was relying on the retailers themselves to report themselves. As you can imagine, that wasn't a very effective process. So having these proactive compliance checks will be super important moving forward. Thank you so much for your support, and I have also made note of some of your comments and loved your, loved your ideas there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barr, and thank you for everything you and your organization do to make the world safer for our young ones. With that, any further comments?
There are no other hands raised, Mayor.
City attorney, did you have?
Yeah, we're just going to suggest it's on your agenda there, but to introduce the ordinance and waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance. We promised the county that we would try to get this done in November.
Then officially, let me, let me re, I did read it. Do I need to read it again, or just to adopt?
A motion to waive-
To waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance.
There we go. So if I could have a motion to waive the first reading and adopt the ordinance? Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Second.
Boy, we've got a race tonight. Thank you, Councilman Fung. Any further council comments? City clerk, could you please call the vote?
Certainly. Councilmember Kaylin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The city council waived the first reading and introduced our ordinance repealing and replacing section 5.95.70, Regulation of Methods of Selling Tobacco Products in Chapter 5.95, Smoking Control. The motion passed by a vote of four to zero.
And thank you, staff, on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving, completing existing business, moving on to new business, we have agenda item number 10, Resolution Establishing an Official City of Millbrae Land Acknowledgement Statement. This is an action item. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our project manager, Mr. Eduardo Gonzalez, for his staff presentation.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of the city council, Eduardo Gonzalez, project manager. This evening, I have the pleasure of presenting item number- item number 10, which is a resolution establishing an official City of Millbrae land acknowledgement statement. Next slide, please. The staff recommendation is for the council to consider and adopt an official city land acknowledgement statement. Next slide. Little bit of background. On November 24, 2023, the city council proclaimed the month of November 2023 as Native American Heritage Month. At that council meeting, the mayor directed staff to bring forward a land acknowledgement for council consideration at the second council meeting in November. And the timing to bring the land acknowledgement for council approval is appropriate, as the intent and goal is to approve the land acknowledgement to coincide during the Native American Heritage Month and to honor the original inhabitants of the City of Millbrae. So what is a land acknowledgement? So a land acknowledgement is a formal statement that recognizes and respects the indigenous peoples as traditional stewards of the land. This is an act of conciliation that makes a statement recognizing the traditional land of the indigenous people who have called and still call the land home before and after the arrivals of settlers and were displaced. Why do we recognize the land? It is important that we recognize the land as an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those whose homelands we reside on, and as recognition of the original people who have been living and working on the land. Equally important is for us to realize and pay homage to the longstanding history that has brought all of us to reside on the lands and to seek, to appreciate our place within that history. So staff examined other nearby agencies that have undergone a comparable procedure to formulate a land acknowledgement. We did research of the Association of Ramaitushaloni website to ensure that the proposed statements, which you will see in the next few slides, align with others that have been supported by the ARO. The three sample land acknowledgements were crafted to honor the Ramaitushaloni, who are the original peoples of the City of Millbrae and the greater San Francisco Peninsula. Here, next few slides are some of the sample statements for council consideration. The first sample statement is, we acknowledge that the City of Millbrae sits on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramaitushaloni, who are the original peoples of the San Francisco Peninsula. We recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland, and that we affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples. Sample statement number two is, we, the City of Millbrae, acknowledge that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramaitushaloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramaitushaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors and relatives of the Ramaitush community, and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. And finally, sample statement number three is, the Millbrae City Council acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramaitushaloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We wish to pay our respects to the ancestors and relatives of the Ramaitush community, and to affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples. We recognize that the Ramaitushaloni have lived in harmony with nature for millennia, and that to achieve a truly ecologically sustainable future for Millbrae, we must embrace indigenous traditional ecological knowledge in how we care for the city's lands, waters, and all its people. Next slide, please. So staff recommends that the city council adopt one of the three sample acknowledgement statements as presented, or modify as desired by the city council. Once adopted by the city council, the land acknowledgement statement could be read at every formal meeting of the city. This would include city council meetings, as well as the other commission and committee meetings. The adopted City of Millbrae land acknowledgement statement can also be included on every official city meeting agenda. And with that, again, staff recommends the city council consider and adopt an official city land acknowledgement statement.
Thank you, project director, project manager Gonzalez. Well done. Counsel comments? I've got some speaker slips, then we can come back. We have three choices in front of us tonight. With that, counsel, anyone?
Yeah, I'm trying to raise my hand.
Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to say thank you to our mayor and to city staff for getting this on the agenda. It's a long time coming, but it's very timely. And it's definitely an honor to be able to have this on the agenda and have a discussion about this item, not just here for our city, but for the Ramaitushaloni community as well. So thank you. And I look forward to being able to, I wanted to make, one of the things I wanted to do is make sure that we acknowledge that words are extremely powerful, and they mean a lot. And I don't want us to, my suggestion, not that I don't want, I think my suggestion would be to be very intentional about the words we choose, and to make sure that there is a call to action attached to this, or at least accompanied by these words that we adopt tonight. I hope that we are going to be able to adopt a land acknowledgement tonight. And to also add, with that call to action, a sense of true, meaningful relationship building with the Aloney community, to make sure that we acknowledge who we are as a city and what we stand for, but also what we intend to do and have been doing over the last year, as you have stated in the past, through your relationship building and fostering with the Ramaitushaloni community. So hopefully, that could be a part of this. And so I had some suggestions, but hopefully we hear from other council members and the speakers, and just kind of tweak one of these. That way include some action items or a call to action.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Counsel, do you want to hear from the public? In terms of what the Vice Mayor said, I agree completely. I have a statement, given that I've sort of been working on this since January with Dr. Cordero. But let's get the public, let's hear from the public. And with that, Michael Kelly, and then Gina Miranda, and then whomever we may have online.
Hi, good evening. Michael Kelly, live in Millbrae for many weeks, and co-founder of the Anti-Racist Coalition. One other element very proud of is that, both on behalf of ARC and myself, I've been a proponent of this for years. I helped broker the introduction with our mayor and Dr. Jonathan Cordero, the executive director of the Association of Ramaitushaloni, ARO. And I just wanted to call out that there, with the action piece of it, there's something I'm so proud of. There's, I asked for permission to do this, because it's not my story to tell. But one of our newest commissioners for the Parks and Recreation Commission, Jordan Miranda, has Choctaw heritage in his family. And I asked him if I could make mention that he's now serving the city, and this embrace of the indigenous people, of Native Americans, and making that difference, and making a land acknowledgement. It's just really gratifying. It's very heartening that these actions are being taken. And, you know, I'd asked Jordan if he was ever going to make mention of it. He said, I'd like people to know. I'm not quite sure how to do it. So again, it's not my story to tell, but just kind of acknowledging his heritage and what he's doing for the city now as a commissioner on Parks and Recreation, I thought, was important for the city to know. The other thing I'd like to make mention of, you know, there's been obviously the tragedy going on with a lot of violence in the world. We know about what's happening in Gaza from the news. We know about Armenian genocides of a million people being murdered. We know about the Holocaust, when there's 6 million people being murdered. The historians in the United States say that the Native American, the indigenous population, is likely the largest genocide ever in the history of humans. 50 to 100 million indigenous people have been murdered in the colonization and the taking of the land of the indigenous people over the centuries that the Western European colonizers got here. And I think it's important. If people didn't know that, they need to know that. So acknowledging the land where we're spending our time, where we live, where we do our business, is really gratifying that the City of Millbrae is now at this point. The last thing I would have wished, I know we recently had our 75th anniversary of the city. There was a treasure hunt. It would have been really great if somebody had thought, hey, how about some kind of, one of the little treasures you can find is something about the Aloney people, not just the guy Mills, who, you know, the city's named after. That would have been just a really gratifying element to round this out. But thank you very much for putting a land acknowledgement in play.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Gina Miranda?
Hi there. I'm Gina Miranda. I'm a longtime Millbrae resident. Land acknowledgements are important. I've had pleasure the past two years of learning more and more about land acknowledgements and indigenous, and how they help our lands. So I appreciate learning from the Millbrae Historical Society, who worked on the Aloney Portola Heritage Trail markings, and also Millbrae ARC, and talking to those folks, and just learning and sucking up so much information, and just seeing how it's important. And it's not just because it's popular that I'm up here. It's because I'm just seeing how it's so much more important. Somebody mentioned land acknowledgements, what they were. I call them public speeches, repeated over and over again in meetings such as city councils. But when they're well done, they can, they help us understand the history of the land where we reside, and how we can care for the land and its people, past and present, but also that we're concerned about its future, which is all of our futures, by the way, and we can take action. So standing here, I'm not Native American Indian. I'm not going to tell you I am. Yes, my son is, and I wasn't going to mention that, Jordan Miranda. But I'm not here to say that we should ignore all races and just focus on one race, because we're all guests on this land, including the indigenous folks. And I don't want to adopt this because it's just popular in the moment, also. It's a long-term commitment. But we do have the opportunity to take action on the long term. So thank you for proposing this. We can start by listening to those unheard voices and centering the Native Americans who know how to care for its land, who know how to steward, and have the ancestral knowledge that helps all of us. We could also start by talking more about it. Land acknowledgements is a start, but we talk more about it. When we do this, we constantly remind ourselves of what's needed and what we're already doing, which we are. Millbrae is doing a lot. So I think the most important thing about this work is that we, each of us has the opportunity to become, to empower communities, to find our interconnectedness, work together, and the opportunity to tell success stories about that. So in closing, let's take on the America, the beautiful challenge. Let's listen to those voices who have the ancestral knowledge, and let's continue to make progress and loudly proclaim the success stories. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. Do we have, I have no other paper public speakers. Do we have anyone online?
Mayor, we do not have any public speakers online.
Closing public speaking. Before I bring this back to council, and we look at the three examples, and I heard the Vice Mayor say that it sounds like some word tweaking of some of those, I'm going to provide background, mainly more for those who may be watching at home. So I actually met Dr. Cordero at a Council of Cities dinner in Pacifica at the Adobe, which is one of the villages of the Ramaitushaloni, and had the opportunity to hear him and talk about what the Ramaitushaloni are trying to achieve, given that there are not enough of them to get federally recognized as a tribe here in America, which breaks one's heart on that. And then Michael Kelly did introduce me, and when I became mayor in January, I met with Dr. Cordero. We met at Pete's Coffee, and we talked about the goals of the Aloney peoples. And I won't say all three, but there were three. And again, I work in the environment, so everything he said to me is music to my ears on that. It was restoring the land. It was, in their biggest dream, they would love to get some land of their own back. Now, Millbrae doesn't have a lot of land, but, so restoring the land and doing that, and then helping to educate people about caring for the land. And we talked about various projects. And here I'm going to thank Speaker Gina Miranda, who put together the first Dia de los Muertos event a couple of years ago, and brought a tribal elder. And she did a ceremony for us, and she used a particular kind of sage. And she had to go all the way down to Ventura County to get that sage. And I'm bringing this up now because land acknowledgement is one thing, but actually putting into the programs that we do, whether they're through our staff or through our committees and commissions, is a way of, I think, being true to all of us on that. So I talked to Dr. Cordero, and I said, well, what if we created a Native American medicinal garden, or a Native American garden on that? And he said, that sounds like a great idea. He did tell me in everything we do, he wanted it coming from the grassroots of Millbrae. And the reason this has taken longer is we've been waiting for the Social Equity Commission for that. So with respect to Dr. Cordero, this is how we've planned it. The other thing that we talked about, which I find really exciting, and someone in front of primetime today brought it up, is as we redo our parks, as we do our Adopt a Spot program, are we using native plants? Each one of these can become interpretive and educational just by their act of being there. So these are another way that Park and Recreation Program can include moving forward on restoring the earth and respect for our original, our First Nations people on that. And I had a couple of other ones. Councilwoman Cahalan and I are working on the East Side specific plan. To me, this is the most exciting opportunity of restoring land, bringing the Bay Trail in, access to nature for all of us in respect with the Ramaitushaloni. So I think with all of this, land restoration, we're all stronger together. We have shared goals of respect. We're healing past wrongs, and we're healing the planet. With that, my favorite, I actually like all three. I like number two. I really like number three, because it talks to me about working together on improvements on that. But I am open to the council members. I'm just happy to see this happen. And Dr. Cordero's not with us tonight, but thank you, Dr. Cordero, for all the time that you spent with me, and helping me understand, and now helping Millbrae understand. Thank you. Counselwoman Cahalan?
Thank you. I'm also excited to see this here at council tonight and here in our City of Millbrae. I've been involved with groups and organizations for many, many years now that do begin their meetings and their events and their programs with a land acknowledgement. So I understand the meaning of it and have, you know, felt what it brings to the group. I think in making that land acknowledgement, we are honoring our original peoples. We're acknowledging the roots of the land that we are on, and acknowledging that history of how we got to where we are today, and especially bringing that action piece, looking at how we do it, how we move forward. So I think starting our meetings with a land acknowledgement really grounds us. acknowledgement really grounds us in our history, in all the peoples that came before us, and brings us into the moment, and really guides us as we work together in making our decisions and moving forward. So I'm very excited about this. In terms of looking at the different options, I think especially, could you go to the third one? Just the last line of this one really stood out to me of, "We recognize that the Ramaitush Aloney have lived in harmony with nature for millennia, and that to achieve a truly ecologically sustainable future for Millbrae, we must embrace indigenous, traditional ecological knowledge in how we care for the city's lands, waters, and all its people." I think especially that last part really brings us back into the roots of what we're doing today and connects the history with the present and the future. So that line especially stands out to me.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Fung, any comments? And then I'll bring it back to the vice mayor.
This is an important discussion. I think that I would really love to hear from members of the community from the Aloney heritage as to how we can honor them and make sure that they're there at the table to have this discussion in discussions such as this. You mentioned, Mayor, a moment ago, that they would like some of the land back, right? And that, how perhaps instead of simply a document such as this, but rather, for example, maybe a park, maybe a trail, maybe the community garden can be something that we dedicate in honor of the Ramaitush Aloney heritage, so that there could be a place for gathering rather than just a document, right? But some place where, you know, we could dedicate in honor of them, something along those lines to show our respect to their heritage and what they've sacrificed for all of us. So I think those, I'd like to hear from some of their representatives, so that we can be able to have this discussion and this dialogue in an open setting such as this, so that we learn from them directly, how we honor them, how we will be able to respect them in a way that they felt respected. I think that certainly is a worthy discussion to have.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. I hear what you're saying, and again, in conversations with Dr. Cordero, who is, and Michael Kelly probably knows his correct title, is the representative of the Ramaitush Aloney, that he had hoped that this would come from the people, and it did in terms of that. And I would like us to go forward today. We can always change it in the future. But let me, in terms of your land, Dr. Cordero and I, we actually sat and I pulled out some maps and looked at our courtyard, our pipeyard, as a place to create land, to grow plants, to restore the spur trail. But I have this bigger vision that we need land in Millbrae to create our human potable water. It could also become an interpretive center. And if there is enough land there, I would be the first one in line advocating for a center for the Ramaitush Aloney here in Millbrae on our east side that can become both something for the Aloney peoples, but also for people to come to Millbrae and learn about that, and to come and enjoy what Millbrae has to offer on that. And I think all of that will come from the Social Equity Commission. It's what I'm hoping from, although possibly also from Community Arts Advisory Committee and from the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. I see aspects of all of this in our committees. And of course, it's my dream that all of our committees work together in subcommittees on that. So I think with some things that we're not quite at liberty to talk about yet, there's a chance to do that. Now, Dr. Cordero also shared with me some land San Francisco, city and county offered, and I don't want to insult the city and county during APEC. Let's just say we can do a better job than what was offered to the Ramaitush Aloney. And as our representative to the Bay Area Water, ASCA, Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, we just toured the land out there, and Dr. Cordero said what they dearly would love is access to Lake Pillar Cedos, which they consider one of their original places, which right now you cannot get to because the whole road fell in, and I saw it on that. So there's a lot of work we can do as we move forward, but I'd like to see this get done tonight. And then the vice mayor, sorry, vice mayor.
Sorry. The only reason I'm sneaking in here is just specifically in response to the comment around having input from Ramaitush Aloney peoples on Millbrae's land acknowledgement. I pulled up the Association of Ramaitush Aloney's website, because in learning more myself, this was something that stood out to me. But one of the things on their Thing to Consider list is, who is the land acknowledgement really for? And it says, "It's for you," and in this case, "you" is the non-indigenous people. It says, "Land acknowledgement statements are primarily for you, not for us, and you should read them to open meetings, events, et cetera, not us." So not to leave out any voices, but for those of us who are not indigenous and acknowledging that we are on indigenous land, and what that means to us and how we want to acknowledge that and make that meaningful in our community.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I've heard that line before, so thank you for bringing that up. Vice mayor, my apologies. Go ahead.
No, no, none needed. Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Cahalan. I think it is about the acknowledgement of the people, their, our shared humanity and their existence. And to make this acknowledgement is for us and to center us in the decisions that we make in a meaningful way. What I would suggest is, I agree that sample three speaks to me. And there's just a few things that I would change, since there are some, the recommendation is for us to tweak it if we could, or if we wanted to. And I would just humbly request that we add after, let's see, after unceded ancestral, if we would add traditional and contemporary lands.
Yeah, it's the second line. Traditional and contemporary.
Unceded ancestral, comma, traditional and contemporary homeland. The homeland is already there, but just to add those two words.
First sentence.
Yeah, we have, it's on the first sentence.
Yeah. Is that good? To add traditional and contemporary after ancestral.
I'm okay with that. It looks like we're okay.
Okay. And then next, my request around the call to action and to acknowledge a meaningful relationship, kind of to what Councilmember Fung is suggesting, that this isn't something that ends with just words, that we continue. And I think that's what he was getting at, because I agree that it should be more than just words, that we should be doing. And so I would like to add, oh, can you go back to?
We're pulling it up right now, vice mayor.
Okay. All right, sorry. Okay. That Millbrae, let's see, future for Millbrae, "We must embrace indigenous traditional and all its people." And then next, "We will uplift, comma, embrace, and foster a meaningful relationship with the Ramaitush Aloney community. And we encourage all to visit ramaitush.org to learn more and donate." And the donate part, I'm not sure legally if we can, if we're making that suggestion to donate, if that's something we can do. If not, we can just leave it with "to learn more."
Vice mayor, you spoke, even though you spoke slowly, faster than I could write.
Yes.
Did we capture that?
I know we have it on tape, so.
I can read it again if you like.
But, Vice mayor, I'm not sure at public meetings if we should be encouraging donations.
Right. So yeah, that's why I said, we, if not, we leave it at "more." But I just want us to make sure that there is a call to action. And once they're at, individuals, if they choose to go to the website, they can learn more, and they can see that, yes, this is how I can contribute. But just to really have that as a call to action, and then also put in here that this is what the city is doing. This isn't just words, that we are continuing to uplift, embrace, and foster meaningful relationships with the Ramaitush Aloney community.
Hey, Vice mayor, could you just go over that one more time?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Kind of got lost in.
Of course.
So this is after the very last line, where it says, "in how we care for the city lands," or after?
Yes, after that. So after its people, period. "We will continue to uplift, embrace, and foster a meaningful relationship," or it could be meaningful relationships, "with the Ramaitush Aloney community. And we continue, and we encourage all to visit ramaitush.org to learn more."
It sounds like council's okay with that.
Thank you.
I know we have it on tape.
The very end of, Vice mayor, and we encourage?
We encourage all to visit ramaitush.org to learn more. And I don't know if that's a good way to end that, or if we could say, "learn more" on how you can, I don't know if, or if you want to just leave it at "learn more."
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to end a sentence with "learn more"?
Well.
Is there a slightly higher grammar we might be able to use there?
Right. That's what I was trying to get at. I had to donate after.
The intent is perfect, but.
Learn more about the Ramaitush Aloney.
Yeah, I liked, that's how you closed it before, Vice mayor.
Learn more.
To learn more about.
Or.
The Ramaitush Aloney.
To learn more, yeah.
The Ramaitush Aloney peoples.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's always weird when we're asked to vote on something and the language is not immediately in front of us. So I think we might have to go a tiny bit on trust here, that staff is going to make it look good and proper grammar.
Right.
If we get it wrong, we can change it.
Yeah, and again, this.
I think we have it, though, mayor. I think we have good notes.
Do we need for the motion to read it entirely, council? Do you want it read entirely once more?
I'm okay.
Okay?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
I know tonight, we're, the main focus here is picking the language and voting on this, but in terms of kind of implementation and where we implement using this, would that be a separate agenda item for council?
Yeah, I think that would be more of a, more of a planning, goal-setting, CIP-type.
Wait, I'm ready to start council meeting on November 28th with the new land acknowledgement.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. The question was, so tonight, there was direction on a call to action, and some of that may be, you know, in the built environment, open space, integrated into our parks. That cannot be done tonight. That's something that needs to be planned, reviewed, designed.
I guess I was.
Where then I think we reach out to Dr. Cordero and see what would.
I was actually thinking more about, like, will we use this at all committees and commissions? And if we do, what would be the right way to roll it out, to introduce it to them, or, you know, which city events would we use it at, and those kinds of things.
Okay, yeah, I understand. So good question. So we're recommending that this be placed on all official agendas, the land acknowledgement. And then, again, this is at the pleasure of the city council, whether you want to read it before every council meeting, and then direct commissions and committees to also read it. It will be placed on their agenda, and the way they will be notified is through us. We will, our liaison, and we'll communicate with them to make sure it's implemented.
Question, city manager. We just did the big check, the big check event, as they called it in the Daily Journal, the $300,000 for the two parks, Bayside Manor and Marina Vista. And I know that our new Park and Rec Commissioner had talked to me about drought-tolerant plants, beneficial insect plants, which fit very much in line with what the Ramaitush Aloney are trying to do on land restoration. That project is currently in action. So I would like to think that making sure that we're including native plants in those areas in the new parks is something we don't have to bring back to goal-setting, that we can just start implementing.
Mayor, no, no, correct. You don't have to bring that back to goal-setting. Yeah, it's.
Yeah, but for everything else, it's kind of like, in my world, we try to get recycling embedded into everything. And so in time, it will take, it will take time to get that embedded in our other services.
What I will say, so native plants, right, they don't, that's going to be part of the design and directive. But if we want, say, an interpretation display board, for example, like what's up at Sorocamp Trail, then that can be integrated into the park plan.
Very good.
And then that we would bring back to the city council and say, okay, here's a design, here's the interpretive information on the design, to have that discussion and approval of the council.
Excellent. And so, for example, Community Enhancement Advisory Committee has been tasked of working with staff to find new land for the Tree Memorial, because that program was so popular and we ran out of space. But if we found that space, and, you know, we might want to switch from the same oak tree, in case they all get hit with the same disease, some learning I've been doing, some learning, some education I got while I was on the watershed. They lost an awful lot of oak trees, so they're recommending a much more diverse planting, so that if one disease comes in, we don't lose everything. But again, that kind of project could fit very nicely into plants that have historical significance to the Aloney peoples.
Yeah, and I think, I think you may have brought up the Social Equity Commission. This is also where, as their plan evolves and is eventually adopted, where we implement things just now as a standard, that we can integrate into public improvements and that type of thing, right? So that strategic plan that they have, let's say that we have a park, or renovating a park, or planting, then we can integrate how we recognize the Ramaitush Aloney, and to what you also said, some native plants. And again, I'm just kind of visioning here that we would have history, background, interpretation, not only of plants, but also of some of the traditions, for example.
Just so I don't lose it, because I'm getting ever so old, we still need to come up to the community garden, where the pollinator garden is, and put a little symbol. Now, we've got a symbol that's kind of universal for drought tolerant, but is there a symbol for a butterfly? Because we're really trying to work on making sure we don't lose the monarch butterfly. And then versus a bird, and then maybe there's another symbol than that, you know, with the Ramaitush Aloney, that means this is one of their traditional medicinal plants. That would be another exciting thing, because I see our kids coming down from our schools, including St. Dunstan's and the preschools, and coming to a garden to learn about Native American plants, and how they use those plants, and what they did with those plants. I think it would be so fantastic. So, but I think our committees can start working on that even without waiting for goal-setting to say, "You must do this."
Right.
Councilman?
And I think, you know, in terms of next step here, if I may just kind of suggest that this could be perfectly for an agenda item for the future Social Equity Commission, as they discuss, you know, how, what's the next steps after this?
For integration.
For integrations and action plans, and whether or not, you know, this would be on the agenda, this would be on a community garden, maybe a dedication at a community garden. You know, you mentioned a place of gathering, you know, this could be the perfect venue at which these discussions can take place. You know, that's why we created the Social Equity Commission. And I think that should certainly be a future agenda item for them to discuss, so that they can bring these recommendations forward to this council.
Yeah.
And since we have the Chair of Culture Arts here, I did finally get to the Gorman Museum at Davis. They had a grand reopening up there. It actually has some of the artists that I have, but they've got hundreds of paintings that will never be shown, as long as we can keep them safe. And then I have my own First Nations artwork, if we ever want to do art exhibits, and the tradition, which is very nature-based, very, very nature-based. Of course, it speaks to me on that. Of course, it speaks to me on that. I'm excited. I think this is lovely. Councilwoman.
Just one last thing. In thinking about rolling it out to our committees and commissions, it might be nice to do a little presentation, you know, kind of giving some background and understanding of who the Ramatouche Aloni are, um what we have done in Milbury, like adding the the panels and the history on the uh trail, still just called the Portola Trail. But um we've added that history there. And then talk, you know, a little bit about why we as a city are doing this, just so that um it has, you know, they have an understanding of why we're adding this um to their meetings and that it has meaning for them rather than just kind of a a memo.
We'll do that. I mean, you can rely on staff that will present it and we will give them all the background and information as we roll it out for sure. So thank you.
Okay, so bringing it back. Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Do we want to read the whole statement one more time and then vote?
We can certainly do that, Mayor.
Okay. City Clerk, you had a, if you are ready, do you want to read it for us?
I'm going to share screen and read it and just so um we have it. The City of Milbury Council acknowledged that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatouche Aloni peoples.
No, we we already, yeah, so it's the Milbury City Council acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral comma traditional comma and contemporary homeland.
Traditional and contemporary.
And contemporary.
Yeah. Unceded ancestral comma traditional comma and contemporary.
Homeland.
Homeland.
Okay. Good catch. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Um and who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We wish to pay our respects to the ancestral and ancestors and relatives of the Ramatouche community and to affirm their sovereign rights as the first peoples. We recognize that the Ramatouche Aloni have lived in harmony with nature for millennia and that to achieve a truly ecological sustainable future for Milbury, we must embrace an indigenous traditional eco- um ecological knowledge in how we care for the city's lands, water and all its people. We will continue to uplift, embrace and foster a meaningful relationship with the Ramatouche Aloni community. And we encourage all to visit ramatouche.org to learn more about the Ramatouche Aloni people.
Lovely. Thank you, City Clerk and staff.
Are there any recommendations on the second embrace? If we should just have uplift and foster versus having embrace?
Good point. Reduce, remove the the second embrace.
The second one, the second one. Yeah.
What do you want to replace it with? I'm sorry.
Nothing, just leave it uplift and.
Uplift and foster.
Yes.
Just remove the word embrace.
Yeah, because it's up above, yeah.
Okay. City, City Attorney, we look okay?
It looks okay to me.
It looks good to me. City Council, do we have a motion to approve our new land acknowledgement?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Thank you, uh Councilwoman Cahalan. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council, any further discussion? City Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung. Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The City Council adopted item number 10, resolution establishing official city of Milbury land acknowledgement statement by the vote of four to zero.
Thank you, staff, and thank you, everyone. I look forward to reading this at my last, well, my almost last council meeting. So I'm very happy that it's done while I'm still here. And well done. New business, which is a little bit shorter, so we're on our last item tonight, number 11, resolution authorizing the Public Works Environmental Programs to apply for and accept all available Senate Bill 1383 local assistance funds from CalRecycle and authorizing City Manager or designee to approve and or execute all documents to secure SB 1383 local assistance funds and implement approved projects from February 22nd, 2022 through February 22nd, 2027, long distance planning here. And it is an action item. City Manager.
Thank you. I'd just like to introduce our Director of Engineering and Public Works, Mr. Sam Batista, for staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council members. I know I won't get a lot of applause on this one, but I'll go ahead and and do it anyways. So here you go.
You will always get it from me. It's it's garbage, yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, so um next slide, please. So just to give the audience a little bit of information regarding this California Senate Bill 1383 or for short SB 1383. It was established, it's established for statewide emission reduction targets for short-lived climate pollutants such as methane. It also requires the state to reduce the amount of organic waste disposed in landfills by 75% from 2014 levels by um 2025. And CalRecycle proposed regulations that require an approach for local jurisdictions to achieve specific requirements for reducing the amount of organic waste, such as food waste that goes to landfills. Next slide, please. So in response, the City of Milbury adopted ordinance number 791, which was adopted back in November of 2021. It added two certain chapters to our municipal code. One is the regulating of mandatory organic waste disposal reduction. And then the other chapter was purchasing purchasing system regarding procurement of recovered organic waste products. The city made significant progress towards compliance with SB 1380, 1383 and is meeting the timeline required by CalRecycle. Next slide, please. So in January of 2022, CalRecycle started accepting applications for the SB 1383 Local Assistance Grant Program. And this grant is to provide one-time aid to local jurisdictions in the implementation of SB 1383 regulations. And this is just a list of eligible activities for this grant. Organic waste processing capacity planning, organic or collection of organic waste, edible food recovery activities, education outreach, enforcement, inspection, procurement of required recycled organic waste products, program evaluation and gap analysis. And uh, you know, one of one of which I just wanted to highlight is the um the second to the bottom procurement of required recycled organic waste products. We do uh compost giveaways, so that is part of that portion of the program. Next slide, please. So um the grant includes a minimum base award of $20,000 for each approved applicant and additional funding allocated per capita. Staff intends to use this funding to improve current organic waste collection infrastructure and to support development of a procurement compliance program. And as part of the application process, the city is required to submit an um a resolution approved by the city council authorizing the submission of the application. Next slide, please. And so tonight's recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the submittal of applications to CalRecycle for all grants for which the city is eligible, authorizing the city manager or their designee to execute and implement all grant documents and authorizing these approvals be effective for five years after the adoption date. So with that, um I can answer any questions. And also, Ms. Papa John, the Environmental Programs Manager is online on Zoom to answer any questions, so.
Excellent. Thank you, um Public Works Director Batista. City Council. Vice Mayor? Did we lose the Vice Mayor? I don't see his photo anymore. I do see a wall. Okay, he's still with us, but not on there. Just a couple of questions on SB 1383. Of course, I support it completely. My again, because I work in this field, making me a real pain for staff. I don't know how many of our residents are participating in putting their food scraps in the compost bins. I don't know how many of them are putting their their yard waste or grass in the compost bins. So it doesn't give me a sense of how good we're doing. The goal is 75% of organic material out of landfills to reduce reduce methane. And landfills used to be the third most common source of methane releases. It's now behind fracking on that. So we've become number four on landfill. So it's really critical to get organics out. And I really, really would love to ask that maybe we get an end of the year, whether it's a calendar, it won't be a calendar, an end of the fiscal year of where we're going. Because I believe with the education of 1383, we have to get back to our residents and we definitely have to get back to your restaurants. Remember, I've got 40 years in this field. I can walk into a restaurant and tell you if they're doing it or not. I know. I can look at a garbage bin and know. And if we don't have that feedback loop back to our restaurants and back to our residents, we don't know how well they're doing. And other cities, including those that I've worked for, we would do an annual report and say, our participation rate is 50% or 60%. I personally think here in Milbury, it's probably pretty good because we never got the pushback of other communities with the ick factor, which is actually a technical term. People will put their yard waste and icky veggies in their garbage can, but they don't want to put it in their pristine compost pan. And it's it's a real thing that every program across the country is dealing with the ick factor. And it very much hit the ecology groups just below us on that. So I'd love to get that data. And with that data, then we can tweak our education program because it is one of the few things we, as every individual, can do right now to save the planet. It is that simple. It's not an overexaggeration how important SB 81383 is and our compliance with it. The other side of that is that they are a garbage company, which I dearly love, wouldn't accept lumber on that. And yet lumber in a landfill is organic and is going to decay in an anaerobic environment. So we need, we need some more feedback on that. And we need to push all garbage companies, zero waste companies, whatever we want to call them, to do more. It still bothers me that my scrap metal can't go in my recycle bin and I have to go to Zark to do that. So I think we, if we can do a little bit more pushing and making sure we're doing everything we can. I believe that the people of Milbury are doing a really good job, but I have no data to support it. So if you could provide that, I am happy to support this. I'm really and truly public, if you're not asleep out there, this is the one thing you truly can do. And as can our restaurants. And then we haven't even talked about the food recovery, the 20% food recovery. We need to get on the ball on that. So thank you. And thank you, Andrea. Anybody else? Okay, I believe this is an action item. Oh, wait, let me make sure I'm looking.
Yes, it's to adopt a resolution.
It is an action item.
You are authorizing the submission of applications for grants whenever the opportunities arise. Yeah.
I I'm I'm done lecturing, so yes, if we could have a a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Was that the Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
I heard the voice from above. All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Cahalan. I didn't open it up for public comments. Do we have any public comments?
I do not see any hands raised.
And I had nothing in writing. So closing public comments, bringing it back to Council. City Clerk, could you call the vote?
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Item number 11 passed by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. And we are at 9:22, which actually gives us time to do something. We often run out of time, which which are council comments. And for the public, council comments traditionally have been council reporting on meetings that they attend, wearing our city hats. Here in Milbury, we often talk about all of the events we have because we are the city of festivals and we're quite proud of that. So we have enough time to go into whatever level detail. It is also the only time we can actually talk sort of kind of to each other because with public meeting rules, we can't talk to each other. So with that, um who would like to go first? I'm looking at the Councilwoman Cahalan, she's going to go first.
Sure. City Manager Williams mentioned our Veterans Day event. It was a really wonderful event and it seems to, and we're making it larger and and more active every year. So it was a wonderful event and and that gratitude to all of our veterans who've served our country um in the past and are are serving currently. The, I attended One Shoreline's presentation the other week. That was a really good event. There was even more information than we got at the council meeting, so it was great to learn more. It was great to hear all the public comment at that meeting and hear all the different organizations that are keeping an eye on this, um many of them sharing similar concerns that have been brought up by the council here. And was glad to hear that they extended that period per so many folks' requests to have more time to review all the documents. So I know um we're working on that. The, thank you to Public Works for all the work that they're doing to prep for the upcoming rains and the storm. Been engaged in that a little bit and then especially around working with SFO and the clearing of the Lomita Canal and the progress that uh was made on that this year. So work's continuing to happen there. I want to give another shout out to the CERT training. You know, as the mayor said, we definitely need more folks. And also really looking to ensure that we have folks from every part of the city so that all of our neighborhoods are covered. So I'm hoping to participate in that and and hope to see many Milbury residents in that as well. We have commute.org is coming up, so there hasn't been one of those since our last meeting, so no report out there. And Airport Land Use um resumes in January and Park and Rec is next week. The last report out I have is I had the opportunity last week to shadow our Life Moves Outreach Team. I went with them from 8:00 PM to 12:30 in the morning and shadowed the work that they're doing throughout our community. They have an incredible understanding of what's happening in Milbury of who the folks are we're seeing here longer term and have those relationships with them as they cultivate that relationship and work with them towards housing or shelter, at least as a first step. Understanding all the places to look that are the commonplaces folks stay when they're around. It was great to talk from that to them and hear what are the avenues that they really see success? Where are the bottlenecks that they face? You know, we were able to get two people into Safe Harbor Shelter that night. But that was very early on by 10 o'clock, which meant there was no more beds there. So we really couldn't offer another bed that night because the slated spots they had were already full and would have to wait till, you know, we could tell someone, we can get you something tomorrow night or once the core agencies are open in the morning. Actually, it was Thursday night and Friday was the holiday, so we were, we couldn't get folks something till Monday. So it was just really great to see it firsthand and to talk with the folks. And I think my original understanding was that they were only at the BART station. But they really are looking around the city and they noticed the trends. So, you know, later in the night is when they see more folks at BART. So, you know, they just have all the trends in their routine. I mean, they have it down. They're doing such a great job and it was really wonderful to get to see that firsthand and work with them. So thank you.
So on that, though, we so we did add an extra resource for the downtown area. So it started at BART and then it evolved because of the spillover and stuff, so.
Thank you, City Manager and Councilwoman. Councilman Fung.
So I attended the new business on October 28th. Spark Education just came into our city and offer more educational opportunities for our children. So that's wonderful. They offer many um different after-school programs and other enrichment activities for our children, so we need more of that. So that's wonderful. And December 2nd is our tree lighting, so make sure everybody join us for the festivity. Milbury is at the end of the day, it's a city of festivals and we'd love to have everybody joining us. So mark your calendar, December 2nd, 5:00 PM, is that correct, city staff?
5:00 PM, that is correct.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, it's a great tradition for us, so look forward to seeing everybody.
Thank you, councilman. Vice Mayor.
Okay, so on the 9th, I attended the Samhain County Veterans Commission 8th Annual Veterans Luncheon. It was very well attended. And then on the 11th, I also attended and was able to participate with our very own Veterans Day acknowledgement. And I'm trying to see what else. I think that's about it. I was going to do some shameless, being a proud dad, as my son, a resident of Millbrae, was recognized today in the Daily Journal as Athlete of the Week and Student Athlete of the Week, actually. And so, I would also like to acknowledge our colleague Gina Pappin. You know, politics is politics, but we all know we have our own lives, and I just want to wish her well. I'm not sure, you know, where, or what's going on, but we do wish you well and wish you, to see you back at the meeting soon.
Excellent. Thank you. I think she's on Family Fun.
Okay.
I think we heard that she's at a wedding.
Okay, great.
But the flight got delayed.
Yeah, for the record, and it's an excused absence, her had mechanical difficulty with her flight and was delayed, so was not able to.
All right. Well, you never know. So, just, safe flight home.
It's a lovely thought. Okay, I have things that have kind of been building up in my in-tray that you get as mayor, but first I want to say that our Ground Based Noise meeting has been delayed because SFO has not put the temporary monitors in around Millbrae Hillsborough and Burlingame. We were trying to get it done while it was still summertime travel. Noise is different in hot, dry weather than it is in wet, cold weather. So, we've missed that window, another delay on trying to prove where the noise is coming from. I'm glad that Councilwoman Cahalan brought up One Shoreline. I believe the new timeline is November 30th, and thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for helping to schedule that meeting so that we can work on that. The Emergency Services Council I mentioned was canceled for the fall, so we haven't met since June, and the next meeting will be in January. My concern is that we have never debriefed, and to be honest, I'm part of the subcommittee to debrief from the CZU fire and COVID and the sky turning orange all at the same time, and there just never seems to be time for that. So, maybe when I step down as mayor, there'll be a little bit more time. For the Legislative Committee, we had hoped that we would meet, or I hope that we would meet. This is the time of year typically that our state legislators, sometimes our federal legislatures, depends on the cycle, are working on what bills they could or should be carrying for the district. So, this is a time for Millbrae to figure out, and maybe staff to simply tell us, what are the top priorities for us in 2024 ledge cycle on that?
Yeah, Mayor, so we do have meetings coming up individually with council members, and Michelle Rubiclava in December.
That's right. I think those were scheduled quite a while, but possibly also for the ledge subcommittee to get together on that. I am going to go show you some things. I do want to let, the city manager probably will. City manager, when will we be starting the work on Lincoln Circle? Because this is actually very exciting, this work of repaving a street that really, really, really needs repaving and a new sidewalk on it. But there are so many cars there, and I'm wondering in January. The then-councilwoman Schneider would love to have a district meeting for her district, that includes my district there, and we talk about maybe some transportation demand management plans for all of the apartments there. When I go up to the rec center with the month, the Halloween stuff, I was there a lot, and there's no parking, and it's hard to see little ones between the cars there. So, my guess is that we have many people living in the apartments with many cars. So, we probably need to encourage the apartment managers to make sure their tenants are parking in the parking and not on the street, just for public safety on that.
So, Mayor, we do enforce the parking in the recreation center parking lot?
Yeah, in the park, no, this is on the street, on Lincoln Circle. It's almost always, anytime of day occupied.
And that's public parking.
Yeah. But you can't see kids if they're coming out, so.
Right. So, as part of this project, so to answer your question, so Monday, November 27th is the start date.
Oh, so coming up really soon. Monday, November 27th.
And also note that this is also going out in Spanish and Chinese, by the way.
Excellent.
And then the part of this project is a raised crosswalk, mid-level crosswalk, just to the east of the curb cut and entry into the parking lot at the rec center.
Will it pull the cars back so that you can actually see somebody in the crosswalk there?
Correct. So, the curbs will be painted red. There'll be plenty of visibility.
Okay. Just to let council know that I did a public records act to the county assessor, trying to find out how many properties don't pay sales tax in Millbrae. This is the map. I know no one can see it, but it has errors in it. So, it doesn't include any of the SFO land. It implies that the SFO land is paying taxes, which I don't think is accurate. So, there's some more work that we'll be doing on this map.
Yeah, for the record, since we're on the, SFO does not pay taxes.
But the map that we got from the county is wrong, so I hate to correct the county assessor, but we're going to have to correct the county assessor.
You mean property tax, right?
Property tax, yeah. We're trying to figure out why, why we have the second lowest-funded schools and why the loss of TOT to us and property tax is so significant. Ultimately, I'd like to say of our 3.3 square miles, how much of that pays no taxes and cannot be developed on? So, if you go to ABAG for RENA standards, and we might be transit-rich, but we're not land-rich. So, we have these restrictions that I think that could come out for RENA numbers on there too. But you got to start with some real valid data, and the data has been interesting. I did get something from the Secretary of State, so I'm just making this for the public record, and it says that the Senate is transmitting a Senate Joint Resolution 2 on Climate Change and Foss Fuels, which was currently adopted by the California State Legislature. So, I'm just putting it on record that our Senate is doing work on fuels. I'm going to read this into the public, because staff doesn't always get thank yous. This comes from the students that did their youth in government, and they want to say to City Hall staff, "Thank you for assisting YCPP to become a reality, and while certain cases were awfully challenged, we've grown and implemented change." Your patience with us, patience with us was amazing, especially the setup to the event. And then, thank you, Mayor Schneider, Tom Williams, Ms. Hannah Moran, Ms. Tran, Mr. Gonzalez, saw the dream and advised us for a better camp for all the children. Your efforts are appreciated." And then it's signed by all the students. So, I will make sure that you get that. Congressman Mullen wrote us a thank you note. When I was there at the National League of Cities, I was in his office, and there was nothing in his bookcases. So, by our very clever city clerk, came up with naming a sign, Congressman Kevin Mullenway, and we mailed it off to the congressman, and he wrote us a thank you note. And he said it is now prominently displayed in his congressional offices in DC, so that people visiting will see Millbrae and Kevin Mullenway. Also, Gina's not here tonight, but Gina and I were very early on in trying to get Mickelson Pool at Mills Hospital reopened. It has officially been reopening. It actually was an effort by all of us in Millbrae City Council and the people of Millbrae, so thank you. I have to give a shout out for the Daily Journal, because I've kind of been nagging them that they have not been covering Millbrae community events. So, they did put in the event, which I think is an amazing public-private partnership between the city of Millbrae, Public Works, and the city manager, and the Millbrae Leos Club for the plastic bag to park benches. So, we got into the journal. I'll get copies to staff. And then they did cover the Millbrae Lions Peace Prize poster contest, which a young woman from, I think originally from Russia, given that she did her speech in Russian, won this year's competition, and will go up to the next state level. So, I'm very appreciative to the Daily Journal for covering Millbrae a little bit more. To anybody who's still listening tonight, this is the map of adopt-a-spots that we have in town, and the Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, which is such a mouthful, has these adopt-a-spots. I believe the Leos will be adopting some, but it would be nice, as we roll out into the new year, to get more adopt-a-spots. And city manager, so that I can be a good liaison, we did give them the okay to start going back to working on Adopt a Drain. We had put that on hold after the atmospheric rivers. You can let me know on that. And then for Councilman Marie, Councilman Fung and I, there are actually two federal legislative actions happening right now for our Native Americans, for our First Peoples. One is to create an Amber Alert specifically for Native American children, and I would like us to sign on to that. It's a federal legislative bill. I have it in my other notes. And another one is a tribe that I've actually done work for. It is for the, I'm looking for the tribe name here, the Urap Tribe in Northern California. They are asking the federal government to ban a particular chemical in all tires. The chemical in the tires are ending up in the creeks, and it is killing salmon. And for all of our West Coast Native Americans, salmon is the lifeblood, and it's in all of their art and all of their traditions. So, I would love to see the city of Millbrae sign on to those federal laws, and that's another way that we take action for our original peoples. And then finally, I did this tour, and next year I hope that staff and council, because they had space allowed, we toured the watershed behind us. So, we started at the Water Temple in, I'm not sure if that's Redwood City or Woodside, and went on back roads all the way along the old reservoirs. We looked at the road conditions. We looked at what they're doing to try to keep the water clean. That's where I got to see that the road to Lake Pillar Cidos, which is in back, which I've been to twice before, once as an elementary kid at Meadows, it's completely gone. The whole hillside just came out in the atmospheric rivers this fall. So, they, that, we've been talking about the problem with Camp Sawyer, Sawyer Camp Trail being closed. If the road is as bad as that one, I can see it, but the mayor, and then the new mayor, getting better at learning to write letters to our higher office holders, saying, "That trail has been closed for the most part of three years." It's one of the most common complaints that the city, city manager gets, that I get as mayor, that you're going to get, is that trail is beloved, and we haven't had access for most of the last three years. But what I did was make photocopies of the whole system, so that we're continually learning in there. It is, it's an incredible system built over 100 years ago. So, with that, I think, I think that is everything tonight. I'm glad that you talked about the Life Moves program. I have been communicating with Governor Newsom's cabinet member for homeless, and I've been, I've sent her the notes from our Life Move reports, and she would like to come to Millbrae and meet with that. And maybe going with you and shadowing would be a great way to talk about a really good program and something that Millbrae shines. I will end that I took a KPIX reporter, I took a bunch of reporters around Millbrae Train Station last week in prep for the APEC conference, and I have never seen the station look so clean as when I'm taking reporters around to show the litter, and I could only find a little bit of litter. So, thank you to Caltrain and BART's Public Works. But yeah, let's keep the pressure on to see how absolutely beautiful it is. I am speaking to a group, 100 students at Mills High School on Friday about this week, People Against Hate. I'm not, what's the right name of the week? We just celebrated it last week.
United Against Hate.
United Against Hate. Thank you. And to talk about how young people can get more involved in local government and about environmental justice. I took other students working on a paper for environmental justice around the train station last week. So, it's been a busy time with students and our ability to try to make sure the city is accessible to young people, so they know that their votes count. With that, we, I have nothing else to say. Staff, anything? I will say, Happy Thanksgiving coming up next week. Please come to the mayor, the mayors, it's whatever the mayor, state of the city, which is actually written by staff. I want to give a huge shout out to Justine, who writes the notes for the city mayor, the mayor and council members. She made a lovely presentation, a lovely speech for Veterans Day. I got to elaborate a little bit on it, but she does great work. But I wish everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving, and we will see you on Tuesday, November 28th. And we are adjourning at 9:43.